All right, we'll call the meeting to order. Start with a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, call the roll, please.
Connor?
Here.
Gary?
Here.
McCallan?
Here.
Reed?
Here.
Here. For changes or approval of the agenda, there is one change. Item nine, there will be a public hearing regarding the pre-annexation agreement. Are there any other changes to the agenda? I'll read a proclamation for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Don't want to read the everything, but whereas domestic violence is defined as abusive behavior that gives one family or household member control and power over another through physical, emotional, sexual, economic, or psychological actions of threats, and whereas domestic violence is a serious crime that affects people of all races, ages, gender identities, socioeconomic levels, religions, backgrounds, beliefs, and abilities, and whereas the trauma of domestic violence has a long-lasting impact on survivors or support system in our community, and whereas in the United States, one in three women and one in four men have experienced some form of physical violence by an intimate partner, and whereas on average, nearly 20 people per minute are physically abused by an intimate partner in the United States, and whereas it takes courage for a survivor to seek help, and whereas Safe Journeys, formerly EDV and SAS, provides free confidential services to more than 422 survivors of domestic violence and 110 survivors of sexual violence and their supportive persons in 2022 in LaSalle and Livingston Counties, and whereas the city of Streeter is an important partner in Safe Journeys' vision to create a community where people thrive in safe and healthy relationships, now therefore be resolved on this 18th day of October, the city of Streeter proclaims the month of October 2023 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. At this time, we will open up for public comment. For anyone that would like to speak for public comment, you have a three-minute time limit, and you also, we just ask that you come to the podium and state your name. I'll give you a 30-second warning when you get to the end of your minutes.
My name's Bill Lowman. I was here last month about the problems over at the dog park again. I really wasn't going to come here tonight, but last night I had a couple of friends, so I was over there with their dogs. They were harassed again by three policemen. They seemed that they just don't, you know, don't have anything else to do except a lot of harassed people who had simply gone to the park, had their dog run before they went dead. It was seven o'clock in the evening, which is 15, 20 minutes ago, so last night. It's dark out already, so. Also, the, it's a right to, I think, for some people, she has a right to have their dog in the park. And secondly, we had just no trouble at all with the cops for seven years until the Stewart Township High School decided to have their soccer game at the dog park. After that, they seem we had trouble with that. I read the dog park website and Facebook, and somebody had been harassed back in August even, so it's something to really think about again, and hope you will decide. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question? Bill, you said that they got harassed, are they there after dark?
I was there after dark, it was seven o'clock.
Yeah, because the parks close at dark.
The parks don't close at dark, if they're going to do that, then my little girl will do that same part, where people walk into the same park.
You can walk through.
Or earnings park.
You can walk through, but you can't stay. I've been chased out of a rental park after dark before.
That's nice.
Hi, I'm Tony Pettin, I live at 206 LaSalle Street, and I just wanted to support Bill and his comments about the dog park. So when the dog park opened, it was a wonderful thing. I went frequently with my dog. We have people from out of the area from Ottawa saying what a wonderful dog park it was, and we presented a signed request, kind of a main tour three years ago, for a variance of existing ordinance that says parks close at sundown. Many people used the dog park, and as the days got shorter, and it's dark at 4:30, and people are getting off work at 5:00, and they'd like to take their dogs to the dog park, they can't, because first of all, it's dark before they get off of work, and then with the dawn to dusk or dawn to dark ordinance, it doesn't allow people then to utilize the park during the fall and winter hours, and many people still go there. So we had suggested at that time that solar lights be installed so that there would be lighting, because it is dark, right? You don't want people hanging around in the dark, but nothing came of that, and I just think it appears that perhaps council could reconsider putting up solar lights so that people could stay there until reasonable hour, and not saying it should be out there at midnight, but you could put solar motion activated lights up so there wouldn't be any darkness, and that people would be able to take their dogs out there, stipulate 8:00, and if it's 8:00, somebody will check, and you'll check on them, but it seems a little bit unreasonable. Difficult to utilize the park during the fall and winter hours when dark is at 4:30, and you've been at work all day, and I know some of you are dog owners, and you know when you get home, your dog wants to play and, so I just think maybe the council should reconsider and just throw a couple of solar lights for three and by 8:00 and say, this is it, and your dogs. And I understand what you're saying about the city park, that you can't stay there, but people, but it is very well lit, and because people do walk through it, and I just don't think it's on your list of, I'm unusual to ask for a couple of hours of the dog park.
Hello, my name is Ben Chairman Arangula, order 125 South Vermillion Street building. Used to be an office building there. I got workers coming up from different states. They told me to work, so I tried to use the building like it's a small apartment unit. That way they can stay there, because it cost me so much money to pay for the hotel. So I know the last time they say there was a problem with the parking lot, but they don't have like so many cars. You see, if they get two or four people, they can't only one problem. And they say like a few weeks, or when the work is done, and some of the people come, but they never be like a bunch of trucks or cars, because they drive car. Yeah, that was, that was, it's why I come here, try to get the permit, because let me use only a few people to take this up, like a room or something, that way they can stay and come and help. Because there's no workers, I don't get any more help. It is some, but it's hard to get more help over here, more in the construction area. Thank you.
Anyone? Any other public comment? We'll move on to new business. Item one, you'll see that item one and two are very close, so we have 16A and 16B for two choices. So I'm going to request a motion and second, so that we can discuss the two ordinances for both of those. So Tim and Dave read with a second, and this is regarding the sale of alcohol and hours it's allowed on Sunday. So item one, any discussions for package sales to start at 6:00 a.m. on Sunday is currently not allowed until 10:00 a.m. Again, again, item two would be all sales.
Okay, so item one is just package.
Item one would be just package sales.
And 16B is?
And 16B, which is item two, is, would be all sales.
You're for discussion on which one?
The motion, I understand it was to item number one.
Item one.
Item one is on the floor, which is the motion for the ordinance which would allow early package sales only.
This follows the only law, correct?
No.
Well.
In a way.
I mean, we have the authority to.
Right.
To amend it however we want.
Right.
The whole reason this came up for discussion is so that restaurants could start doing brunches on Sundays and have things like Bloody Marys and mimosas. So the first one we're considering would not allow that, it would only be packaged letter.
Because we've also had complaints from, like Kroger, for example, where they were at Kroger at the checkout line before 10:00 a.m. on a Sunday, you wouldn't be able to produce anything as well. So with this one, we're on the floor with A. We should take two separate votes. Cheryl, is that correct? Vote for A and then go to item two.
Well, they're both on the agenda. I think if A passes, we know which way the wind's going for B. But I suppose the council, in a matter of a few moments, might change its mind and decide to let these sales for everything.
Well, I will call, if there's no further discussion on one, or item 16A, or item 16A, then I will call, have clerk call a roll.
Connor?
No.
Gary?
No.
McCallan?
Name.
Reed?
No.
Mayor be done.
Aye. Item two, which is the ordinance admitting blood liquor code concerning hours when sales of alcohol are permitted, and this would be all sales starting 6:00 a.m. on Sunday, you get a motion and second.
So moved.
Move the motion and get a second. Tim with the second. And discussion.
I just think it's better to treat them all the same. You know, what the American license is for. Right now, they can open at 6:00 a.m. Monday through Saturday, and there's not a lot of them that take advantage or use that, most of them are 10:00 o'clock in the morning or so. I don't see a big push of people, bars themselves opening at 6:00, but if they choose to, you know, to run some served food, it'll allow them to in places like Al's and Chipper's, you know, the other restaurants that aren't strictly there.
Yeah, I expected a lot of comments from citizens on this, especially after it hit the paper. I didn't get one call, one email, one text. I think for the most part, our tavern owners are very good businessmen and businesswomen, some maybe women, I don't know them all, but I think even though there are a lot to open at 6:00, I don't see a lot of them doing it, because it just wouldn't justify the cost of being open, so I don't think this will be an issue.
Well, for me, I think I'm going to be the dissenting vote, but as always, council, there's four of us, four of you want to meet, and whatever you decide, that is what we will follow and enforce, that's what I will do as liquor commissioner, so I will, I might not like it, but I'll follow the rules. So I will state that there's no further discussion.
When would this take place?
It would go into effect 10 days after the ordinance is published. It'll be published tomorrow.
Okay, I have a couple, may I ask?
Yeah.
Just when it would take place, I don't know.
It takes 10 days for an ordinance to go into effect.
And then do we notify all the different places that there's going to change, or do we just remind them to read a similar?
We've sent letters, well, we've made changes, I know we've sent letters as far as BASA training and making that a requirement, so we can send a letter to.
Like the gas stations in the grocery stores, and all those places, we'll know that.
Yeah, we have, we have the list of everyone that's licensed holder within the city. Hey, clerk, call the roll, please.
Connor?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
McCallan?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Mayor be done.
Name. Item three, is a Resolution 202339, authorizing and supporting an NARP intergovernmental agreement for the Vermillion River with the city of Pontiac, Illinois, and get a motion and second.
Second.
Okay, Tim with the motion and move with the second. Discussion. To Jeremy on this one.
This is what we talked about it, we, the whole last week, so this will, an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Pontiac, or myself as the city engineer's fear to write, and IEP required nutrient assessment reduction plan as part of Pontiac's permit, as well as the city's permit requirement, so we were going to do it anyway, and this way we can partner up some costs, so prove the things for the river, so that's the plan.
Any other discussion or questions or comments? Clerk, call the roll, please.
Connor?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
McCallan?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Mayor be done.
Aye. Item four, Resolution 202340, authorizing and approving execution of an environmental land use control letter in connection with 408 North Bloomington Street, former Keene Station. Get a motion and second. Okay, Matt with the motion and Tim with the second. It was very close. And Jeremy, go through this one.
Oh, yeah, I stayed up here, but this is for the former Keene lot at the corner of Broadway and North Bloomington Street. Basically says, the city's aware of the potential contamination related to that gas station underneath the Twister Hill Park, in the event that we ever dig a hole there, and count on that contamination, we will deal with it as required anyway, so we, the city council, the council of past, the east of the past, this is, so the Keene lot can get a note for their radiation letter from IEP.
Any other questions or comments? Clerk, call the roll, please.
Connor?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
McCallan?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Mayor be done.
Aye. Item five, will be a motion to receive and place on file Plan Commission's recommendations, and there are three, 202309, 10, and 11. So this is only, I'll receive and place on fire file, the rest of them will be voted on individually as we go down the agenda. You get a motion and second.
So moved, second.
Okay, Dave with the motion and Matt with the second. Any comments or discussion? Clerk, call the roll, please.
Connor?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
McCallan?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Mayor be done.
Aye. Item six is a motion to accept the Plan Commission recommendation 202309 to deny a special use permit petitioning to allow for their former Vermillion Arcade, 125 to 127 South Vermillion Street, to be converted into apartments under provisions of Chapter 17, 1732 permissible uses of the municipal code, and get a motion and second.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moves with the motion and Matt with the second, and this is up for discussion.
I see the Plan Commission came to the conclusion that it did not conform with the 11 requirements. It didn't break down which specifically, but it looks like it's mostly the issue with parking.
Our current ordinance allows for two apartments on a second or upper floor.
Correct.
Correct. In the CB, your central district, business district, so our downtown area. So without the special use permit, you're not allowed to have a first floor apartment or living space. Which I remember 10, 11, 12 years ago, we had a lot of that and had a lot of issues and complaints at that time regarding it.
That's when that ordinance allowing two was passed, it was at the time of the 2014 Toprace of Plan, that a lot of two upstairs, anything first floor or above two upstairs required special use, and you have it there in the packet, so you have the Plan Commission recommended denial, Mr. Ramblin's the one that just spoke here during public comment, seeking the special use, but parking was a major factor, it was something that was opposition from neighbors, I think that was in there, there was four neighboring property owners in objection, so to answer any other questions.
And he spoke of the parking in the public comment section. I still think it's just a bad precedent to have residents on the first floor in the downtown district.
Would that encompass like an Airbnb that, that fall into like a commercial business? Or is this more curiosity? I believe actually hotels are permitted. I didn't know if that was the same.
We might want one.
We have no hotels.
So, but that's, I need to.
To make sure. We might want the members only to specifically deal with short-term rentals, because they are causing a lot of problems in other communities.
And that was a future topic. Well, are there any other comments or discussion on this? I agree with Mr. Reed that once we allow it once, it's such a precedent now we may have. It's one of those things where you want people to be responsible owners, but if you get one irresponsible person that does it, then it becomes a problem, so.
Well, we've already had the problem. As you said, it was years ago, but we did have a problem with it. We dealt with it, so I don't think we should go backwards.
Any other discussion? Clerk, call the roll, please.
Connor?
This is to deny, correct?
Yes, so yes, so is to deny.
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
McCallan?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Mayor be done.
Aye. Item seven is ordinance 202318, approving and issuing a variance from the provisions of Title 17, Section 174010, density and dimensional regulations of the Streeter Municipal Code to allow for the subdivision of an existing lot that will result in two lots not meeting the 7,500 square feet minimum lot size requirements for the R1B zoning district at 112 East Grant Street, City of Streeter, LaSalle County. You get a motion and second.
So moved. Second.
And with the motion and Dave with the second. And discussion. Jeremy, you've been doing such a good job of opening it.
I stayed up here because I'd rather walk back, I apologize. If you want me to sit down and tell me, but so the Plan Commission.
Put the podium on that side.
The Plan Commission, in this case, recommended, acting as the zoning board of appeals, so we're still, have some issues there with that in court, but they acted as the zoning board of appeals for a previous council, or city council order, and they recommend approval of that variance. There's two single-family homes, it's not a garage conversion, there's two single-family homes built decades ago on one lot, she would like to split that lot so she can sell one house off, and they recommended approval of that case.
Have we done this in the past?
There's one directly to the north, this is 902, at the end of the 900 block to the north, this was built years ago, I don't know when, but a similar situation existed on the north end of this block, and it was done.
At 912, and then the big two-story house behind it.
Yeah, behind it, but that was, they were originally on one lot, and then it was subdivided as she would like to do.
I went by there today and looked at them, and it does, it looks like the original house was on Park Street, and then somebody built the house behind, obviously decades ago. No fault of the homeowner.
Any further discussion? Clerk, call the roll, please.
Connor?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
McCallan?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Mayor be done.
Aye. And item eight is Resolution 202341, approving and awarding a facade grant to John Anderson, property owner of 114 North Monroe Street, Streeter, Illinois, in the amount of $15,000. Get a motion and second.
So moved.
Move with the motion, Matt with the second. And discussion.
In this unanimous agreement from the Plan Commission, he's going to completely redo.
Public hearing first.
Oh, no, that's for number nine.
Okay.
Yeah, unanimous, he's going to completely redo the front, if you've been there, he's been renovating the entire inside of that former First Savings Bank, I think, years ago, so he's requesting $15,000 out of the facade to do this. This is budgetarily, you guys earlier this year did give out the last one, there's one that has been awarded that will not be expended by the end of December, he wants to do this quickly, and so he will expend the money, so budgetarily, he can make it work, and then if you talk about next year's budget, that one will carry over from this year.
I believe John's already started working on that building on the inside.
On the inside, so yeah, he's waiting to hear tomorrow how this goes, and then the front will follow along, so. On the first floor, so yeah, just he's taking out the first floor door. First floor door window, yeah, again, there's door, but yeah, I think, I don't know if, I think you guys have in your packet, but it was a picture of what he proposed to do, so it'll be gray above, and I don't recall the lower, but complete renovation of that door. Yeah, the internal building, yeah, that's not, it's nothing to do with what he's doing here, but yeah, in this is, in that case, he's putting one apartment on the second floor, and then commercial space down below.
Any other comments or discussion? Clerk, call the roll, please.
Connor?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
McCallan?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Mayor be done.
Aye. Item nine, this will be for the public hearing for the pre-annexation agreement between the city of Streeter and Keith and Pamela Anderson at 1517 East First Street. Get a motion and second to open the hearing.
So moved. Second.
Tim and Dave, the motion and second. Clerk, call the roll.
Connor?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
McCallan?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Mayor be done.
Aye. At this time, I'll request comments from the public and council regarding the public hearing on this pre-annexation agreement. Anyone from the public have a comment on pre-annexing? It's not contiguous, so it cannot be annexed, so we have to do a pre-annexation agreement that it ever becomes contiguous to the city, it would automatically be annexed in. And this was for the ability to pursue or hook up. Any comments? I'll request a motion and second to close the public hearing.
So moved.
David and Tim, who's read it. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Connor?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
McCallan?
Aye.
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Mayor Beattie?
Aye. Nine, these will be resolution twenty twenty-three forty-two. Authorizing the execution of a pre-annexation agreement between the city of Streeter, Illinois, and Keith and Pamela Anderson, fifteen seventeen East First Street. Get a motion and second.
So moved. Second.
Okay, um, Moose and Matt with the motion and second. Any discussion? Clerk, call the roll, please.
Connor?
Aye.
Eri?
Aye.
McCallan?
Aye.
Reed? Mayor Beattie?
Aye. Item ten, ordinance twenty twenty-three nineteen. Ordinance to amend title ten, chapter ten twenty-four of the municipal code of ordinances of the city of Streeter, LaSalle, Bloomington County, Illinois, by designating a four-way stop intersection at East Twelfth Street and South Outer Creek Road. You get a motion and second.
So moved. Second.
Okay, Moose and Matt. With the motion and second. And, um, come back?
You're warmed up.
You gave me the epistle, thank you.
Thank you, right. Uh, so this is, uh, as you know, uh, the actual, the final paving on Twelfth Street, uh, was done on, say, uh, yesterday. So the work was completed for paving. Uh, you'll see some, uh, stop bars go down at the intersection of Twelfth Street, but that project is done. It's, there's a little couple punchless items that'll happen tomorrow, and then that project's wrapped up. But, uh, now that the paving work's, uh, done, uh, we're, we're seeing some, uh, high rates of speed at the intersection of Twelfth and, uh, Outer Creek. Uh, going back, talking to the residents that live there, it's been a problem for a lot of years, but now that we smoothed it out, anticipated, uh, it's continuing. So recommending, right now it is stops, uh, the north and south legs, and recommending a stop sign at the, uh, east and west. So it'll slow people down coming into town, and then also right before they leave town. There are road homes out there outside the city, but there are still road homes before you, uh, get out into the country. So, talked to the homeowners director and the police chief, no objections, uh, to it, so up for discussion by you guys tonight, but recommending that stop signs be put in.
Any further questions or comments? I've had a lot of complaints as far as Outer Creek gets involved. Both roads, now that they're nice, we're speeding, so I've been joking, we're going to put the potholes back if you don't slow down. So, uh, please be careful. Uh, I know they're nice now, it's hard to, it's hard to not go fast when they're nice roads, but, um, that's what you do, so, uh, that, I'll ask, uh, the clerk to call the roll, please.
Connor?
Aye.
Eri?
Aye.
McCallan?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Mayor Beattie?
Aye. Item eleven, resolution twenty twenty-three forty-three, accepting a grant from the Illinois Housing Development Authority's Strong Communities Program. Get a motion and second.
So moved. Second.
And Matt with a motion and Tim with the second. Any discussion? This grant is, um, can be used towards demolition or, um, potentially rehabbing, um, homes that, um, use it typically, we've used the grant in the past for, um, demolishing abandoned homes. So this was seventy-three thousand dollars, and the agreement's enclosed. Any other questions or discussion? Clerk, call the roll, please.
Connor?
Aye.
Eri?
Aye.
McCallan?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Mayor Beattie?
Aye. Item twelve, consent agenda. Get a motion and second to approve the consent agenda with a fund borne total of one million forty-two thousand seven hundred eighty dollars and thirteen cents.
So moved. Second.
Okay, Tim and Dave Reed with the second. Any discussion? Clerk, call the roll, please.
Connor?
Aye.
Eri?
Aye.
McCallan?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Beattie?
Aye. Item thirteen, city official comments?
Who would like to start? Okay, well, I have a list, I've got enough for all of you. Uh, I just had, uh, I was going through a few events coming up, so this Saturday, October twenty-first, Little Wall Street is having a scavenger hunt from nine to eleven at Twister Hill Park. And we'll kick off and go, um, through the trail. Saturday, October twenty-eighth is downtown trick-or-treat from nine to twelve PM. Um, Friday, October twenty-seventh, there's a witch's night out event downtown, so for most of our local businesses. The Chamber's running that, but it's from five to eight PM. Uh, Monday, October thirtieth, there will be more information to, to come on this one, but NCICG is hosting a public meeting on the second round, second round of our housing rehab grants. So we had the first round, which was two specific census parcels limited to a couple of neighborhoods, and this is going to, um, encompass anyone within the city limits, in the city of Streeter. Um, and surveys for that grants are going out around the twentieth, so, um, they should be mailed out towards the end of this week. But anyone that's interested, um, in that grant is encouraged to attend that meeting here at City Hall. Um, our trick-or-treat hours are always October thirty-first, so this year it falls on a Tuesday, from five to seven PM. Um, I've got a few people saying, well, why isn't it four to eight or longer? And I just say, go door to door, five to seven, and if you want to go to your friends or your moms or whoever's home, get them when it's on trick-or-treat hours. There's also several, several other events, trunk-or-treat, if it's not on streeter.org's calendar, please send it and we'll get it added. I am looking for zoning board members and put a post out, so, um, I've had a little bit of interest, but if you would want to serve on the zoning board, please contact, uh, me. I have a Google form on my Facebook page, but you're welcome to send an email or, um, leave a message as well, um, with interest.
Do you need to be a citizen?
I believe you need to be in city limits for that.
Resident.
Alright, yeah, I just, some boards you have to...
Some do, some, yeah, this one is one, I believe you do need to be within city limits. Um, so I did cover this beating through twelfth and Outer Creek area. And then just kind of, um, a nice event. October sixth, manufacturing day was held with more than two hundred students that visited local manufacturers. And just to give them a glimpse of, um, what manufacturing's about. So I just wanted to thank the Chamber as well as, um, Vector, ally specialties, US Truck Body, um, for allowing tours. There was also a career fair and, um, session at IBCC, so it was nice to see two hundred kids that were, looked like they were ready to work with work boots on and, and, um, touring, um, different facilities. So that's, uh, any other city official comments?
Yes, I have one. The Streeter Police Department will also be giving out candy on October thirty-first, so bring your ghost of goblins by the station. We have a lot full of treats for them there as well.
Thank you.
Chief, what time did you say?
They'll come back whenever, we're twenty-four hours. Although we don't want to see kids too late.
Right.
Not after curfew.
Thank you.
Then I'll request a motion and second to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Dean, read the motion and Matt with the second. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Connor?
Aye.
Eri?
Aye.
McCallan?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Mayor Beattie?
Aye. Meeting adjourned.